What is, do you know the amount of the post audit?
Yes, I do.
I didn't, I was, I looked for it, I didn't see it.
I can't wear glasses and wear a mask.
Well, that's what, it always steams up my glasses.
We are going live.
Okay, post audit is, is 6:59. One million, eight hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-one cents. That's post audit. And then we're late, late.
Yeah, I got the 171, 745.
The Census Bureau gentleman is not, okay.
Okay, we are live.
He, the Census Bureau just.
You didn't have a late, late.
Late, late, yeah. It was sent out either yesterday or this morning by Johan Novak because there were a few bills.
Clicked yesterday.
171, 745, 20, and Johan sent it out yesterday.
You don't have to look at it to talk to him.
Oh, that's true. All right, I'm gonna put my glasses on.
It's just, it's normal to, you know.
I can stick my tongue out.
But your speakers over here.
No, so I, I did, yep.
The best was, Will, when we tried to teach my mom how to do FaceTime on her phone, and so she would watch. But came time for her to talk, she'd go, so we saw her ear, oh, grandma, your ear looks lovely.
They, they were, that's, some friends were talking to their father through the window, and they had, had him on the phone. And he would, he'd hold his phone down here, and he would talk to him like that through the window, and they'd go in here, you know, it was just, drove her crazy.
I now have seven.
All right. Is everybody ready? I'd like to call this meeting to order. And, well, first, we'll stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
And to the republic.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Thank you. Yep, roll call.
Commissioner Anzorgy.
Here.
Commissioner Rushton.
Present.
Chairman Vahi.
Here.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Suresh Little.
Here.
Commissioner Wattenbach.
Here.
Commissioner Laughtner.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. So then that, then that would bring us then to the, any communications, proclamations, and presentations.
And I believe we have Mr. Springsteen on the.
Yes, so now it'll be for the 2020 census. Mr. Springsteen.
Hello, Commissioners, thanks for having me here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we do, thank you.
Excellent. Just wanted to dial in here and give you an update where we're at with the census for Lelandaw County specifically. I'm a partnership specialist, so my job is working with government and nonprofit agencies to help guide them through the census. Get as best response as we can. Currently, the last updated numbers, which are from yesterday, Lelandaw County as a whole sits at 46.3% self-response. So that's compared to 50% in 2010. We're getting there. Certainly, my goal for the county is to beat the 2010 response. We do have some challenges in particular areas of the county that fall under what we call update leave. And update leave means that the individuals have a household that receives their mail by a P.O. box or similar setup like that. And the Census Bureau does not mail to P.O. boxes. So I look, there's two tracks that have about 40% update leave, which means those, those households have not even received an invitation to the census yet. Which will help drive the numbers up as soon as they do. The census has operationally pushed back everything 90 days. So where originally, we would have been wrapping up the final count on July 31st. We're now wrapping that up on October 31st. We will begin putting people back out on the streets. We had just started when COVID hit. We, I mean, we really, we were two days into the field with people on the streets and had to put a pause on that, obviously. So we do plan to resume putting people back on the streets June 14th. And what they'll be doing right off the start is resuming the update leave operation. So those households that I spoke of that have not received an invitation to the census, they will receive something left on their door handle. So be it in the house or an apartment. We're not going to be knocking and making contact yet. We're just leaving the packet, which will have a paper form and other information on how to respond to the census, right there on the door handle. And they will receive that several times before we make the knock and enumerate process. We're doing pretty good overall. You can always do better. And I know the sheriff just posted recently, I'd reached out in the sheriff department, posted on their Facebook page, reminder for the census. And I saw a significant bump compared to the daily, the daily percentages of increase that go up. So anything that the county can do to reach out, anything that you as individuals can do to reach out to your constituents, that, you know, it goes a long way. So just want to encourage people, it's really easy. All you have to do is go to 2020census.gov and fill out the census, takes less than 10 minutes, nine questions. I just wanted to give you the update and certainly hear for any questions if you have any.
Commissioner Rushton. You're on, gotta unmute.
How's that?
There, thank you.
Thank you. This is more of a question for the county. Do we have that website on our county website? Do we have the census information on the county website where people can access 2020census.gov? And if not, maybe we should consider putting it on our website so that our constituents can go and fill out the forms.
Yeah, that's a very good idea. I will check into that. Laurel just stepped out, so I don't know. But if we don't, we certainly will put it on there. I know the senior services sent out some information to the seniors about the census. So I know it was done by them, but that's a very good idea. If it's not there, we will make sure that's up there.
Okay.
Commissioner Suresh Little.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Springsteen, for being here this evening and for the update. And for mentioning about the P.O. boxes. That was a big concern in both Leland and Lake Leland of a lot of the residents. Question for you. Someone asked me if they went to the census.gov and didn't have, I believe, I can't remember because it's been a long time since I, I filled in my census. But isn't there a key or a number that you're supposed to put in? And if you don't have.
There is a, that's a great question. There is a unique identifier when you receive the invitation that's attached to the address. So if somebody was to go on one of those P.O. box situations, go on early and do it, they can do it. It's recommended by the census that they wait for an invitation. So they have that code, they can do it. And the reason we ask them to wait is they may still, because the address won't be 100% verified, they may still have somebody follow up at their door. Just to make sure that they filled out the census and it was the correct address. They want to completely avoid the government knocking on their door. And wait just till here in mid-June, they'll get that invite. But they, you can go on and do it now without the code.
Thank you.
It's very similar to, like, if you were purchasing on Amazon and 100% recognize your address, and it'll give you three choices, 100% match, 90% match. That's the verification process that you go through, so. And thank you for bringing up the areas. There is the township up there, Leland, and then it's also the area over by Empire is a large swath of update leave.
Commissioner Laughtner.
Yes, thank you. You said this is pushed back to October, Mr. Springsteen?
Yes.
After that's all done, when do those results come out? When will we receive the?
I mean, the census is still hoping to put everything into overdrive and still present the president with the aggregate numbers on December 31st and resume normal process of giving the, you know, local government their population numbers beginning in February, March of 2021. And then throughout 2021, you know, the more detailed information will continue to come out. But to begin, a portionment process should have those numbers by February, March.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
I don't see any, any more questions or, or statements. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Springsteen. We appreciate it.
Thank you, and I know you said she'd stepped out. I'll go ahead and forward Laurel the information, so if it's not on the website, she can just get it down there easily.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. You have a good night. Thank you.
So then, that'll bring us then to approval of board minutes. We have a, if anybody has, there's seven there. I, I would exclude the ones from May 12th. Maybe we could look at approving the other six. Commissioner Suresh Little. You have to unmute.
Sorry, I was unmuting and I muted. I'd like to exclude the April 14th as well.
Both of them, or just the, the?
The executive. Executive.
The executive, all right. Commissioner Anzorgy.
Yes, I'd, I'd move that be approved, the minutes from the BOC special session of May 30th, 2019. The BOC annual session of October 8th, 2019. The BOC special session of February 10th, 2020. And the BOC special session of April 14th, 2020. And the Finance Audit Committee meeting of April 28th, 2020.
Second.
Support. All right. Commissioner Rushton.
I had a correction on, I believe it was February 10th. Let me see if I can find that. February 10th, page 12. I would like the clerk to adjust a phrase in here. It's toward the end of the page. It's the fifth line up, and it begins with, "It doesn't." "It doesn't mean we can't be kind or appreciate and respect our fellow commissioners." I would like the word, the words appreciate and respect to replace what was written, because I believe that's exactly what I said.
Is that okay with the motion maker? Okay, he said yes, yeah. And the second? So any other questions or statements about the minutes? So all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, all those opposed, do the same sign. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much for that.
Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on from minutes, but before we go far, for the last minutes, even though we're not going to prove those, for those who will read the draft minutes, on, I think it's page three, if you click on the link to read Mr. Malone's public comment, there is nothing there. So if we could get that corrected in the meantime, I would appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else? All right, so then that would bring us to approval, approval of the agenda. We do have one late addition about the reimbursement for class. I thought we put that down as 6E. Commissioner Anzorgy.
The sheriff is here, can we, maybe we bump that up so that we can get that done, so that he doesn't have to stick around to the end, end of the meeting?
Sure, i- is it about the 2% then?
No, it's about the late addition.
Oh, okay, about the late.
For the reimbursement, it's a non-controversial. Yes, I would agree with Commissioner Anzor, if we could move that.
Okay, well, you want to put it right at the beginning then?
Please.
Okay, so, so we'll make that A. And so then that'll be the reimbursement. Okay, do we have a motion as amended? Commissioner Laughtner? And do we have support? Commissioner Rushton? We have three. All right. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please give the same sign. Motion passes 7-0. So then that would bring us then to the public comment. And if you want to call, the number to call is 256-8103. And we'll, if, if, we'll take them in the order as they call.
Do you want me to read this one?
Yeah, and while we're waiting, we will, we have one email that we will read. It's very short.
We have an email from Joe Buttonhorn. Subject, internet. I'm writing to let you know my views on expanding the internet in Leland Lodge County. How long we're going to talk about this? How many years has it been to be throwing money at this problem? The time is now. It is valuable as water and sewer in my estimation. Please vote yes.
Thank you. And having no phone, oh, here we go.
Victor, Mr. Speaker.
Yes.
Hi, are you a public comment? Okay, let me push on speaker.
Thank you.
Okay, Victor, why don't you introduce yourself here?
Is it time for me?
Yes.
Victor Goldschmidt.
Okay, go ahead.
Victor Goldschmidt, from Northport, Michigan. I have two comments to make. Can you hear me clearly?
Yeah, but Victor, could you turn down your volume on your, whatever you're washing on?
Yes, I do that.
Because it's, it's echoing.
Yeah, but Victor, could you turn?
Yes, go, go ahead.
No, we're still hearing it, you got to turn it down.
Maybe he did just a little.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Victor.
Yeah, yes, good evening, are we now in there?
Yeah, but Victor, we're still getting feedback. You must have your computer on. You need to turn the volume off on your computer.
Okay, we're, we're off.
Okay, go ahead now.
Okay, am I coming clear now?
Go ahead, yes.
All right. Thanks for the assurance on commentary here. And thank you for this. I have two comments only. One first, let me just share with you part of a letter that I sent to our governor. If you'd like to see the whole letter, because I can email it to you. But the last paragraph that I had there, I said, "Our President Trump causes coronavirus, the invisible enemy." The obvious answer is that the invisible enemy affecting our entire globe is not a physical person, but must be an evil spirit. Just wonder that. I do not know your religion or theology, but I do know God as being one. And I trust you realize that we cannot defeat the devil with regulations and testing. We must hopefully call on God through the Holy Spirit to take on the battle. It only makes sense. If you're not already doing it, I encourage you that every morning as you start your day, to close the door to your office, go on your knees, and simply pray for guidance and wisdom. And intentionally seek counsel from your mighty, from the most almighty one. That's the final paragraph that I shared with the governor. I think I can take it to myself to also consider the course. Because the only way we're going to beat this thing is to, it's a spiritual battle, simply stated. Thanks for, let me share that. If you want the whole letter, I'll be glad to get it to you. The other, the second comment, in case you have any questions, when I saw the agenda, I will be sure that I was available if you had questions. I'll try to preempt them, because it's next item on the agenda. And my, the funds that were dedicated for the seniors program were funds that our church has, that are very unusual funds. They're not repetitive, we cannot be so, they're coming. But we have been very blessed in our church with months, and sometimes we exceed our income. We get more money in than our budget requires. So that's what was, we use for reassurance and for purposes of blessing others. The funds are all given in the name of Jesus. So as you receive the funds, be aware that this is not from the Northport Covenant Church, but it's through Jesus. We want His name glorified. And that's our purpose with those blessings that we share to others. We also have blessings we have sent when there was a major hurricane in Puerto Rico. We had quite a few funds that we could share. And for our congregation, 43 members were very blessed when our, our funds exceed our needs. And if we, to put that money in the bank, that's not the way to be effective steward. So thank you very much. I appreciate how you're doing. Your old friends and colleagues. My, my apologies, I was tripping around here trying to get through. And have a good evening, and everybody have a good time. And remember that morning before you get going, my little son, close your eyes and look up and see what you see. Have a good day.
Thank you, Victor.
You're welcome.
Well, now, in case someone else wants to come.
Yeah, we'll just, the, the number again is 256-8103. That's area code 231, 256-8103, if you'd like to call in. Sounds a little lucky, just a little. Well, if a call comes in, we'll, we'll probably take it, you know. But at this time, I'd like to move on with the action items. And the first item would be our late addition, the reimbursement for class. Commissioner Anzorgy?
Yes, I'd like to move to approve the payment of $510.32 to Sergeant Jennifer Hall as reimbursement for employment-related tuition and books for the spring of the 2020 semester, and further approve the reimbursement for any other courses taken through December 2020 that meet the requirements for reimbursements. Funds to come from account number 351.960.
Support. Any questions?
Just a brief update, if she wishes to take any classes per the contract, it has to be approved by the sheriff and myself. And I'm sure the sheriff will work closely with her. I believe she is hoping to take some classes this year, and she's a very busy lady, working full-time, trying to raise a family. I believe she works evenings, trying to take classes. And she's also been in some special training seminar. So I'm just grateful for her employment here and the fact that she really is focusing on her education and trying to advance herself professionally. Sheriff would probably want to add something here.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Yeah, she is taking, she's working toward her bachelor's degree. She comes in at 6:00 at night, she works till 6:00 in the morning. She's a mother, two children, wife. She also does our seatbelt enforcement program. She teaches people how to properly hook up car seats and travels and has a program. She's also on a sheriff's smart committee for, if there's an officer or deputy lost in a state killing line of duty, she's on a statewide committee to help make phone calls to parents, funeral homes, hospitals, arrange babysitters, dogs, dog care stuff again. So she does above and beyond what we ask her to do. She's a pleasure to work with. I promoted her not too long ago. She's just an ace employee, and I appreciate your support, all of you. Thank you.
Commissioner Laughtner.
Yes, thank you. I have a question that's more procedural. And I apologize, I can't, without losing my screen, swipe back and see the email that explained this. But I thought by policy, we couldn't reimburse until we get their grade back. So is?
We have her grades, yes.
Was it, I, I'm, maybe we could, was a motion to approve it pending requirements of our?
No, we have her grades already.
I thought.
She passed the class.
Spring 2020 is already done?
Yes.
Okay, so if it's not.
No, she, she took some classes winter of 2020, I believe. Correct, Sheriff?
Correct.
Spring 20 starts, spring 2020 actually starts in January.
I thought.
There's fall semester and spring semester. Spring semester actually starts in January. And then there's summer semester.
But it ends at the beginning of May.
Yes.
So it is over.
Beginning of May, yeah, yeah.
So it is over.
Okay.
And she did get a, it did say in the email, she got a 4.0.
Right, I, okay. But the rest of the training, of training, that will come back to us?
Well, the training was not part of this request. That's just a separate thing that she's doing through the sheriff's department. I think we're just trying to point out the fact, she's a very qualified employee and puts in extra time and effort, and has taken extra training beyond taking these classes. That was in addition to these classes. Is that correct, Sheriff?
That is correct.
Yeah, that's what I get. Okay, all right, great. Her policy then.
Yes, yeah. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, all those opposed, the same sign. The motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Then that would, then that would bring us to number one, the senior services, the donation from the Northport Covenant Church. Commissioner Rushton?
I would move to approve. Oops, wait a second. Looks like I went a little too far. I would move to accept the contributions given to the Lelandaw County Senior Services from Northport Covenant Church totaling $1,000 and placed into the Lelandaw County Senior Services Pandemic Donation Account, ending in 675019.
Support. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. The motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Then that brings us to emergency management. Matt's here, we have the Maple City Tower. Any, any questions about it or statements? Commissioner Wattenbach?
I will make a motion to authorize the county board chairman to sign the third amendment to the tower lease agreement for AT&amp;T and the Maple City Tower site, further to reset the terms of the agreement to the first year of three new five-year terms.
Support. Okay, Commissioner Suresh Little and Commissioner Wessel. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Then that brings us to the Federal Economic Development Administration Grant. I think we have a statement here about it.
Yeah, and just to clarify, this is on the agenda for the May 29th meeting. This is simply a request to bless the beginning of the application and to start the process of writing the grant. Once the grant is completed, they will have to come back to the board for final approval. But the reason we're doing this is, or the lift committee's doing this, they don't want to start the process if there's opposition from the board of commissioners. It's a lengthy project to write this grant. It's a lengthy project to write this grant. So this simply is requesting a blessing to go forward. And once the grant is completed, it'll come back to the Board of Commissioners for their approval.
Commissioner Rushton?
Um, yes, I was going to say I have a lot of unanswered questions in regards to this. Um, but if we, uh, if we are going to see this grant, uh, before it actually gets turned in, um, I guess I can agree to move this to the next step. But I have a lot of unanswered questions in regards to, um, the wording in the grant. Our match, what's our match on the grant? Um, what's our obligations and responsibilities with the grant? There was some discussion about two different towers. What does, what does a partnership look like with, uh, is it Glen Arbor? There's been no discussion about any of that, so I think we're kind of flying by the seat of our pants with this. I can appreciate, um, the desire and the need for extended broadband radio service and so on and so forth, but it's disappointing to me when people come to this board and expect us to take action and give us very little information. And I'll yield the floor.
Matt, did you want to say anything about that or not?
Um, I, I know that there is additional information forthcoming to the commissioners by the 29th meeting. And there will be a lot of different feedback, uh, from internet providers and business owners in, in the county. So the commissioners should feel very comfortable by the 29th about making a decision.
And Matt, didn't the grant information just come out last week?
Yeah, it, it's been very recent and, uh, there's a sliding scale that says in turn with what our responsibilities are. So applying all the information that we have, um, it, it's going to take a little time before we can be sure what our commitment will be.
Commissioner Wester?
Yes, I move to authorize the county commissioners and the lift committee and the, uh, group that's working on this grant to proceed with the preparation of the EDA grant proposal and report back to the commission when the grant is completed.
Uh, I believe Commissioner, um, Sutis Little did second that.
Yes, I did.
Okay, we couldn't hear you, but I, I saw you say it. Did you, and you had your hand up, did you want to say anything?
Matt really covered most of what I would have said. The, um, official, um, NOFA came out on Friday. So it has been a bit of a scramble to try and get everything together quickly. The funds are going to come in and go out very fast. So it's, um, I appreciate your concern and will provide as much information as we possibly can to address your questions in advance so that people are comfortable with it. And you're right, there certainly is a huge need, particularly going forward with people who do not have access to internet in a large portion of our county. So in terms of match, that's unclear. I don't think anyone will know for a bit. It's being decided literally on a case-by-case basis within the region. And we are in Chicago's region two. So I can tell you there is something like $546 million available, but we won't know, um, until we actually submit the grant whether or not there will be match in the preliminary review stage. So, uh, unless that changes, and it may, they're still kind of making up the rules.
Commissioner Rushton?
I, I was just going to say we have a special meeting on May 29th where action can be taken. Um, and I would think by May 29th, we would have a little bit more information so we can make a more informed decision at that time. I understand, um, the need, uh, to move forward with this, but as a commissioner with very little information, I feel very uncomfortable supporting this today. However, um, once we have our special meeting on the 29th, as I mentioned, which allows us to take action, why could we not see the information before we make this decision?
I, I think maybe just clarification, if I may.
Go ahead.
We're not asking for you to approve the grant. All we're asking, seeking is for permission to put together the material so you can then approve a grant or make a decision on whether or not you want to. But we just felt it was important to have a nod of approval before we spent a great deal of time. So it makes no sense not to, to give you, I don't have a way to, to satisfy your question without being able to move forward to put the material together, if you understand what I'm saying.
Commissioner Ansorgi?
Um, based on the motion made by Commissioner Westall, you know, it basically said that we report back after the grant is approved. And that, you know, there's no way we can do that by May 29th. So I will not support the motion as made, but I would be in favor of moving this forward to allow the information to be presented at the end of May to us. But that's not the motion that Commissioner Westall made.
Did you want to amend it, Commissioner Ansorgi, or are you asking him to change it? To support it?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure. Do we even need to take any action tonight? Or can we just say we're moving this forward to the May meeting and authorizing the, the, the lift people or whoever's working on this to put the proposal together to inform us in May? I don't, you know, I'm, I'm confused on what, you know, we need to do today other than to move it forward.
Let me try to clarify, on the special meeting on May 29th, that is on the agenda already. Uh, several commissioners find back to our request for meeting sign off. And as you know, for a special meeting, it has to have a specific agenda. That is the item on the May 29th agenda, so it will be on the agenda. But basically, all I think the lift committee wants is, what they don't want is to do a lot of work, a lot of time into it, and see that there's absolutely no interest from the board. I think, and I'm not a member of lift, I think they're simply asking for endorsement to start the process, to develop the grant, to come up with the details, give it to the commissioners for review. And either at the May 29th or the June meeting, the commissioner will have the full grant application for review. At that point, they will have to say yes or no in terms of submitting the grant. The grant cannot be submitted without approval from the Board of Commissioners, as I understand it.
Thank you. Correct.
Commissioner Rushton?
Um, and I do believe at last week's meeting, uh, the consensus of the board at that time was in support of moving forward with this request. Um, so I will not support the motion as stated myself. However, I do, uh, support, uh, the lift team moving forward, um, gathering the information, uh, that we would need in order to approve, uh, seeking a grant. So, as I said, I will not support the motion as made.
Commissioner Wester?
Uh, Commissioner Rushton, just, I, I accept her rewording as an amendment to the, the original motion. She is asking for exactly what I wanted to have happen.
Is that okay with the second?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutis Little?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Laugner? We can't hear you.
She's muted.
Sorry. I was going to ask for a clarification of the motion if we were going to vote on that. But if we successfully pass the amendment, I'm okay with it.
So let's make sure, let's make sure the clerk understands, uh, what we're voting on. So if she would like to clarify what she thinks we're voting on, I think that would be helpful for all commissioners.
Okay. So, okay, the, the clarification I understand is that we're basically moving this forward to endorse it, that they can start working on the grant. And then we will look at the grant to decide whether to approve it or not later on May, let's say, May 29th. Is that, is that, everybody understand that?
That's the intention of my motion. Yes.
Yes. Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, all those opposed, the same sign. The motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Thank you for the clarification. All right, so then we'll, we'll move, move on then to the planning, uh, community development for remonumentation plan. Commissioner Rettenbach?
I move to approve the 2020 revised Leland County Plan for Monticentino Remontation with a note that we... stolen township discussed.
We have the support from Commissioner Ansorgi. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, all those opposed, the same sign. The motion passes seven zero. Thank you. So then that brings us to the equalization potential approval of the 2020 L four forty twenty-nine tax rate request. Commissioner Wester?
I move to, uh, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve a millage rate that does not exceed the maximum millage weight, millage levy and place that millage rate in column 10 as a millage rate requested to be levied July 1 and return L four zero two nine to the Equalization Department.
Second.
Uh, Sutis Little. Uh, any questions or statements? I just, Commissioner Rushton?
I, I was just going to say at last week's board meeting, there was a request to reduce, uh, the taxable amount on our citizens. It was a very small amount, uh, in today's world, every dollar counts. Um, the county is in good financial shape this year and I was very disappointed that this board could not reduce this millage by a few percentage point, not percentage points, but, uh, a very small amount. I will be voting no on this today because I think, uh, our citizens deserve a break in these times.
Okay, that, that's actually my sentiment too. I mean, I believe we could do this. We have been able to do it for years. We just still refuse to do it, so. Any other questions or statements? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Oh, yeah. Okay, and all those opposed, the same sign. The motion passes five to two. Commissioner Laugner, I'm sorry. Oh, five to three, four to three? Yes, oh, I'm sorry. You were raising your hand for a question, I guess.
She's voting no, right?
She's voting no, so they...
Four, three.
It's four, three.
I was, thank you. I appreciate that you amended the motion, but, but that's okay. I also would have liked to just be able to lower that down a little bit. And I was looking for, from my note, the amount that was the last one. And that was going to be my amendment to the motion, but I, I couldn't find it quick enough, so.
I'm sorry. I, I wasn't trying to rush you. I'm sorry about that, but... All right, so the motion passes four, four to three and we're, we're moving on then to the Grand Traverse Band 2% allocation request. Commissioner Rettenbach?
I move to approve percent funding request in the amount of $136,840 to expand the 800 megahertz simulcast system and improve radio communication ability throughout the north end of Leland County.
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, all those opposed, the same sign. The motion passes seven zero. And we have the Planning Community Development Housing Rehabilitation Fund. Commissioner Sutis Little? You have to unmute?
Yep, was doing that, just a little slow.
Okay.
Uh, I move, um, to the Board of Commissioners that the Leland County approve the submission of a 2% allocation request for housing rehabilitation funds in the amount of $10,000.
Laugner and Ansorgi? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. The motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Then this brings us to the Sheriff's Office Great Lakes Patrol Boat Funding. Commissioner Rettenbach, I mean, Rushton?
Thank you. Um, I would move to, I would move that the Board of Commissioners approve the submission of a 2% allocation request and forward it to the Grand Traverse Band in the amount of $25,000 to be used for the Great Lakes Patrol Boat for the Sheriff's Office.
Commissioner Laugner and, and Ansorgi, and I believe seconded. Any questions or statements about this? Commissioner Wester?
Yes, I'm, uh, for the reasons I stated last week, I'm going to vote no because I believe it, it, we're, we're doing it in the wrong order. That if we agree to go get a boat, then we ask for a donation from the tribe, but I believe there are uncertain finances that, uh, we do not know what we're going to be able to do on a boat this summer. And so I don't know, I don't feel comfortable asking the tribe to grant a match for something that we haven't approved. Thank you.
Any other questions? I mean, so all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, all those opposed, the same sign. The motion passes five to two. Thank you. So then that, then that brings us to, um, the Michigan Indigent Defense Communication or Commission Report. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you all for your support throughout all the years. Thank you very much.
So now we're at the MDIC. Commissioner Rettenbach?
I move to approve, uh, submission of the year 21 compliance plan and cost analysis renewal.
Second.
Sutis Little, in time. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. That brings us now to the Polycom town votes.
He's on the general. Okay, we're going to get Ron. He's in his office, but we'll have him in the meeting room so he can give you an update on this.
Um, I, I guess I, I'm a little, I'm very leery of just purchasing, uh, another Polycom. I mean, uh, as far as I understand it, this one's almost never used. It, I think the reason it's being quoted is because it, it's inconvenient for them to ask to use it. And, but since we've set it up here, it has not moved from here. So there really isn't that big of a demand in the court, even though they own it.
Just for clarification, yes. The courts have been using it. It still stays here because they use their screens.
I see.
So it, it has been used. I just want to clarify that.
Okay.
The, the courts are using the system, yes.
Oh, okay.
They always kept it here.
Hasn't been moved from here, then?
No. Oh, the hearings are held here.
Okay.
So just to clarify that.
Oh, I'm glad, yeah.
I didn't want people to think that's not being used.
Okay.
Yes.
Not only Ron, there, yeah, the challenge is in the event, the courts have told us, they take priority.
Yes.
So that's the challenge.
That's the challenge.
And Ron is on the, uh... Hey, Ron, you want to give us an update here?
Uh, well, yeah, uh, looking at the quotes, uh, basically it's just a hardware purchase. So I went with the lowest bid there, uh, company out of New York. I did some little research on them, small company, uh, on Fifth Avenue or somewhere. It's hard to believe it would be a small business on Fifth Avenue in New York. Anyway, um, so again, it's just a piece of hardware. I'm going to, I would install it myself. Um, I've been through installing the... I've been through installing these upstairs in the courtroom, so I don't feel, you know, there'd be anything very difficult. You know, again, it is true, it is borrowed from the Circuit Court. And so when, when they want to use it, they definitely get precedence over it. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Wessel.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the purchase of a PolyReel Presence Group 500-720P video conference kit from D-Way Incorporated of New York, at a cost not to exceed $6,885. Funds to come from Board of Commissioners' Capital Outlay Fund, ending in-970.1000. I'd like to speak to that if I could. Thank you, Ron, for, for doing the research on this. Now, we've gotten used to using the Polycom or the Zoom for, for this, this period of time, but I don't want us to think that this is the only way we're going to use it. I think there are all sorts of ways that we can use this piece of equipment for professional development for staff, for long-distance meetings for staff, for bringing in outside speakers to the county commissioners and to other groups. I think community groups would find this useful for, for their meetings, and I, I just think that it is something that, in this, in this time in our history, we, we need to equip our building with this kind of technology.
Commissioner Soudis Little.
And I will add to what Commissioner Wessel has indicated, that I think you'll find that the court will begin potentially to be using their Polycom system more. I was listening today to information on other courts and our own Supreme Court that are finding this is an incredibly easy way and to allow more transparency and more participation. So I agree that this is a tool we've come to become very familiar with, and it's not one that's going to go away in terms of its use and function.
Commissioner Rushton.
I don't necessarily disagree with any of the comments that have been made. However, we've been sharing this piece of equipment for some time now. I understand that the majority of the court's business is done on opposite days from the Board of Commissioners. My concern is, we're in an unusual time. We do not know what next year is going to look like. I am concerned that we're going out there and spending $7,300 today on something that is not of a critical necessity. We have budget conversations coming up here in a very short time. I would like to see this moved to the budget process, and I would feel a lot more comfortable knowing what the structure of the county is going to look like for next year before we go out there and spend a little over $7,000 on something that is not essential today. Mind you, I understand the benefits a piece of equipment can bring, technology advances, and, but I do not see why we have to run out there today and do that when we don't even know what our budget looks like. So for that reason, today, I will not support this. However, once we take a look at our budget and see what our county expenses and income revenues are going to look like for next year, I would not be opposed to making this capital purchase maybe later on this year or next year, preferably later on this year once we get a bigger picture of what, what things look like.
Commissioner Lotner.
Yes, thank you. I don't disagree with, with Commissioner Rushton on us perhaps looking at that budget time, because it certainly isn't a budgeted item. I guess I understand the desire to look into this at this time, everything going on, but before I purchase it, I guess I would like to see what interest there is possibly out there for other uses, other than what, what's listed or what's been mentioned, or perhaps who would be in it, number one. And number two, we didn't see the other bids, so I think it would bear for us to see all the bids and maybe see a comparison along that line. I don't know if this one was way low, $5 low, we, I just, I just don't know, so it's kind of concerning, and I guess I'd like to know if we spoke to anyone who has this stuff in any place, who's used it, how long they've used it, are they happy with it? So I've got a few of this, what feels like rushing out and buying a Polycom system right now.
Commissioner Ansorbi.
I don't know if Ron was going to answer Melinda's question or not, before I ask my question.
As far as the price range, there was, it was probably about $500 under the next lowest bidder, who was in the $6,000 range. Some of them were above $8,000, too. So there was quite a range as far as the quote, and it was, we're the same piece of equipment. So a couple of the vendors were amazed that they actually came in that low on that piece of equipment. They couldn't believe that they could actually get it through Polycom for what they quoted us.
Yeah, just to clarify, we did go out for bids, we received, I believe, 10 bids. It is for the same type of equipment, we bid out for a Polycom system, so the technical requirements were the same for all the vendors. They were bidding on the same piece of.
Same part number.
Hardware, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Ansorbi.
Yes, my question was, can we use this system down in the community room downstairs? Is that something that could be done in the future? You know?
Yeah, this was, this is not a portable unit, like the one that we're currently using. This would actually be physically mounted near the whiteboard, and the camera would be physically mounted back up on the, on the wall by the windows looking, so it is not a portable unit, it would be just for that, for that room.
Okay, well, and, and I'd just like to say, I know earlier during this crisis, the, our administrator has made an order that no non-essential purchases should be made at this time. I almost feel like we are, we would be going against that order at this time if we were to purchase this, and it's, to me, it would set a bad example to, to our employees if we were going to disobey, you know, an order that our administrator put out. I mean, even though I know, and we're his boss, that still, we should try to follow that, you know, that, you know, that directive, I would think, especially at this time of year. Any other statements, Commissioner Ansorbi?
You know, I look at this, and, you know, I can agree with the concept of, do we need to buy it right this minute? But, you know, the same objections to buying this system, it basically, what we're saying is, we were, we would have a redundancy if we had another system. We'd still have the option of using the portable one if this one went down, or vice versa. So that, you know, we would have the opportunity, and we have to look at, you know, when we put the system in and started, you know, recording our meetings, we have more people watching the meetings, you know, than are attending by far, by far. So this isn't just a nice thing to have, this is something that's actually increasing our, the people that pay our, pay our bills, their access to government. So, you know, I do think it's important, is it critical right this minute? And, you know, probably not. So I will not support the motion, but I would be, I do think that we are going to need to buy this when, you know, in the, in the future, just because of a redundancy and the ability to make sure that, you know, we have the capability of doing this in both, you know, in wherever we need to do it. So I think we're going to see more use of this type of technology, not less, and I think we're going to see the need to look at it. So what I'm going to ask is, you know, when we come to budget time and we're looking at these capital expenditures, you know, maybe we want to buy another portable system so we can move them back and forth rather than having a fixed mount system. I'm just, you know, it's just this idea that maybe that would be more flexible looking at it down the road. I don't know if there's any difference in price or not. Ron, if you could answer that?
Yeah, the only difference in price would be the actual monitor that you would hook it up to in the cart to put it on. It's the same equipment that would go portable versus being in the room. I only chose it to be, you know, permanently mounted because it's cleaner. You know, you don't have that big monitor and cords hanging across the room, and, you know, to me, it was a clean install, and it would look better in our, in our commissioner's room. There's one other comment, I guess, to me, the biggest advantage of this that I see is being able to stream our meetings, so that people who are at home, who can't get out, can't come to the meetings, they can watch it. You know, it, to me, that benefit is going to be there way beyond COVID.
Commissioner Wessel.
Yes, and I, I'm pleased that, I think, I think every commissioner in some way said they were willing and interested in talking about this at some point, so I just soon, I made the motion, I pulled that off and urged that we take a look at this in July and August, that we have our budget discussion, and look at all of the options, and thank Ron for doing the homework. So I withdraw my motion.
Is that okay with the second?
Yes, I think, I agree totally.
All right, so the motion is withdrawn. Commissioner Rushton, did you want to speak then?
I just wanted to say, I appreciate that tie. I think that we are all on the same page as far as this being a benefit to the county, but I found it very interesting that, one, we did not see any of the bid paperwork from this, we got a description of the item, but no bid, no, no bid language, no, no actual submitted bids for this, and I was surprised to learn that this would have been a portable unit, that information was not disclosed to us. So that kind of opens it up to, do we want a fixed unit or a portable unit? I think there's a few things that we need to discuss about this. So I'm very happy that this has been set aside for a future discussion. Thank you.
Yes, and I do think that we will want to have it on our, our budget when we, as one of the budget items when we get to that, for sure. So then, that would bring us then to Leland County COVID-19 Preparedness and Response Plan.
Yeah, let me give you a overview first. As you all probably know, the governor did issue a new executive order yesterday, it's Order 2020-92, that supersedes the previous one. The key component is, and there was some question about that, is, you know, we are now in a different mode in terms of Region Six for bars and restaurants, however, the order still mandates on Page Four that local units of government, and that includes state, county, and local, are still closed and suspended through May 28. Some people thought, because bars and restaurants are opening up this weekend, that we also could too, but it's very specific in the order, and in order, it does mandate, once again, just as the previous order, and now even bars and restaurants have to have a COVID plan in place. So that requirement for counties to have a plan in place is still in existence, and is recommended by our legal counsel, as well as by our insurance agent, MMRA, and actually, what I presented last week is a plan that was drafted by our insurance representative for review. Much of this we have been doing, and so I think we are in compliance. We have been doing the screening, we have been doing the masks, we have been not allowing the public in, we have been educational sessions, we are making plans to reopen, whether it's May 29 or whenever, so I think we're in good shape in terms of being proactive and being in line with the government's request and with our insurance agent is recommending.
Okay, so are we, we're looking for a motion to accept this plan?
Yes, we need to approve this officially.
Could we get a, a motion to accept this plan and approve it? Commissioner Rettenbach.
I move to approve the COVID-19 plan, as presented.
Support from Commissioner Wessel. Any comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Oh, I'm sorry, well, all those opposed, the same sign. So the motion passes seven zero. Commissioner Rushton, I'm sorry, I.
My question, I, I know, that's okay, no. My question is, is there an opportunity to amend that, that plan?
Oh, I'm sure there will be, yes, yes. It'll be a living document, depends on what happens, and depends what our insurance agent, legal counsel recommends. I'm sure it will be. This is actually, the version you have is the first one you have seen, but it's probably the fourth version that I have seen. So every time, there is a change in it. Our agents have been very proactive, and this was part of Michigan Association of County Administrators Conference Call, where virtually all of the administrators were aligned with the insurance agents going through this. And so I'm, yes, I'm sure there'll be modifications as required, as there are with any policy the board passes, you always have the right to modify it.
Any other questions? All right, so then, that would then bring us to, to set the special date, I think we have.
Well, all of you were very good last week, between last Tuesday and, I think, last Thursday, and you gave me your schedule, and we actually found a date that works, but I think it might be a legal holiday because it's the birthday of our board chairman. So I did check with his wife, and she said, yes, we can have a meeting on his birthday. So it's, it's set for the 29th at 9:00 a.m.
All right, so then, then that would bring us to review of financials.
I have no questions.
I have just a couple. I have one. In the late additions on Page Four, I see we've got building safety of Ford Interceptor. So we did a little, and I guess again, about what cars we have outside of our patrol, as extra cars, and I thought, I don't know how many there are or who has them, but it, would it be a possibility of maybe, you know, look at those cars and weighing out the pros and cons of maybe paying mileage for employees if they need to use one of the cars, as opposed to keeping these cars on stick. A little further in the bills, there was another car, I don't know if it was the same vehicle or not, also some repairs done to a second vehicle that was not a patrol car. So, I don't know, that's my question, I guess it's something to think about. I guess oil change, but, you know, we do have, between tires and oil changes and repairs, maybe we should do the math and see, are there two, three, or four that we could maybe pull out of our fleet and perhaps save some money, though? That's my first, and I, so it's not really a question about. Can you get us out?
Back to the first question, we certainly can put together a list of the cars, I assume you're talking about the non-roll patrol cars, correct?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lotner?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, we can get you a list of those cars, and who's using them.
Okay. And was on Page Five, late claims. We had a bill come in for a trial that was back in, so that's just awful late.
But she's frozen.
We're not hearing you, Commissioner Lotner.
I think everyone's frozen.
Oh, yeah.
No, we can.
All right. We're fine.
Can you hear us, though?
And silent.
Can the commissioners hear us?
Yes.
I can.
Do you hear us? Can you hear me?
We just lost everybody else. Wait, well, we just lost the. Wait, well, we just lost the room, the commissioner's room.
Ron's trying to bring us up.
We're, you know, all us, all of us out in the wild are still here. It's just the people in the commissioner's room dropped out.
We have to wait a minute. I think Ron's trying to figure it out.
Maybe the judge took the Polycom equipment for her business.
Maybe that was it.
Well, Melinda, you brought up a good point. Maybe I shouldn't talk until we're back, you know, all back on.
All right, we're back.
There you are.
Sorry. So we didn't get the last question there, Commissioner Lautner.
Okay, well, the last question was on Page 5, late claims. And it was a bill from a trial that was in January. So I'm really not, bill, it was trial, about halfway. Yeah, fortunate in this budget year. So it's really not going to create a budgetary situation. It's a small amount anyway, but it is a late bill. I just, is that the last of all those come in from that trial?
Those are the last ones we just received. Those this week just came in.
We had a statement, no invoice.
Yeah, a statement, no invoice, but they were able to recreate it. I think it came in last Wednesday or Thursday. That shouldn't be in, but it was, wasn't it?
Yeah.
There shouldn't be any others that we know of right now.
Okay.
It won't have any impact.
No, really no impact, but it is late.
Is there anything else, Commissioner Lautner?
No, that, that's.
We're froze again.
It's her. I think everybody else can hear.
Yeah, but they're all frozen. So I don't think she can freeze everybody, though.
Yeah.
I think it's on our side.
No, it's on your side.
Commissioner Ansor.
Could you get Ron again?
Yeah, there's nothing. She's going to have to end the call and start again if we're froze.
Because they're, I mean, they're all frozen.
Yep. So she ends the call and starts again.
We're all, we're all not frozen out here.
No, I'm not frozen. I can hear you, Tony.
Yep.
Yep.
We lost, yes.
Okay.
The problem's on their end.
Correct.
Shall we continue?
Unfortunately, I don't think Michelle's recording now, so we shouldn't be talking about anything substantive until they come back.
Well, of course.
It says live on YouTube recording.
Yeah.
I don't know if it is or isn't.
The sign could be wrong.
Well, I can say we had an absolutely beautiful day out there today. We finally got some of that summer heat.
It was nice.
If you want to call 70 degrees summer heat, but.
Motion to do the fair weather for a while.
Motion for fair weather for a while.
Was that a motion to continue? Because I. You want to say hi?
Want to step away for one second? I think.
Melinda, what's the name of the cat?
Elmer.
Elmer.
Elmer, and he's like right here. He can't stand it. He has to be wherever I am, whatever I'm doing, like right on the desk.
Back when you had the old style monitors, did he sleep on top of there when it was nice and warm?
He could on the keyboard, yeah.
Hi, everybody.
Hi. Hi, Jen.
So I just came to tell you that we have to do the fix-all, which is unplug it from the wall, count to five, and plug it back in. So you should be up shortly in about a minute or two.
Okay, we're all able to communicate.
Yeah, and you're all live, you're all live, and you're still recording.
Okay. Okay.
Does anybody remember how many new patrol cars we're getting this year? Was it three?
I think the last two years, it has been four each year.
I thought.
I thought it was four to keep up with the schedule.
I could grab my budget book. Little bit of light reading. Let me see.
I'm impressed how quickly Melinda was able to find that budget book. I don't know where I put mine.
Entertaining reading all the time.
Well, I, I made a note of all the post-it notes she still has in it.
All right. Okay, we're back. Let's try to hurry this up, okay?
All right.
Are you okay? Melinda, Tony, did you have a question?
I was.
Yes, well, I was, I think we're replacing three or four patrol cars this year. And maybe we should look at maybe keeping a couple, two of those, and swapping out some of these other older vehicles. I don't know. Is that something we can look at?
Of course.
Yes.
Okay. Melinda, I'm sorry, did you want to say something more?
Nope, I'm good. We have budget.
All right. So then at that, are there any special reports or committee reports? No? Then we'll go to, are there any public comment? And the number here is 256-8103. And that's area code 231-256-8103 for public comment. Please call in. All right, so then that would bring us to commissioner comments. Commissioner Ansor.
Yes, thank you. Um, I don't know, it's probably more of a question for Ron, but is the idea of having internet access out in the parking lot, is that completely dead now? Or was he still checking on that?
Ron is actually here.
I don't think that's really going to be a very good solution. Again, our building is brick, and we can't get a wireless signal out there. And to try to fish a wire to that pole where our camera and, yeah, where our camera is of the parking lot, that'd be the logical place to put it, but it would be a real pain. They had water seeping in it before, so they caulked it basically to stop the water from going through. So to try to get a wire through there would be a real problem, I think.
Well, I was, I was thinking more along the lines of sticking one on the, above the entrance to the, from the parking lot there on the building with a directional antenna. I've had real good luck with my home Wi-Fi doing that, you know, as far as making it bounce outside. So I just, that's just my two cents worth, but what the heck do I know?
Going through the brick is the problem.
Well, that's, that's why I was saying, if we put it in, you know, put it up in the, so, you know, the gable end out there, you could be inside, but it wouldn't, it's not brick up there. So I was thinking maybe that would work, but maybe there's no access. I don't know. But I've had real good luck with those, you know, boosters, putting it on there and making it go outside on my home Wi-Fi. I don't know if it's, you know, any different.
So have I at my house, but again, we could look at the socket. I guess Jerry would have to tell me whether he thinks he can get a wire through there or not. There would have to be a wire to that point, so.
And then the other thing that, I don't know if Chet's had an opportunity to call the Attorney General and get an update yet or not?
I did, I did not, I have not had a response back yet.
Okay, thank you.
They are like everybody else working from home, so I'm not sure when they check their messages.
Any other commissioner comments? All right, that would bring us then to amendments and transfers. Okay, how about then claims and accounts?
I would. Accounts, $171,745.
We have a second?
I'll second a motion for 171,745.20.
Thank you.
I don't think she was very clear.
Oh, sorry.
Well, she said it, but it was, it's kind of choppy.
Right.
Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. The motion passes 7-0. Thank you. And that brings us to post audit.
I've moved to approve post audit, $1,801,912.91.
Support.
Okay, we have two, Wessel in. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please give the same sign. The motion passes 7-0. We are adjourned.
Bye-bye.
Thank you very much.